Hey y'all, welcome to Parent Empowerment with Mandy Drogen. I'm Mandy. I'm just a mom sitting down having real conversations with real Texans about what's going on across our state. Today, I am thrilled to be joined by Matt Kraus. Matt is a former legislator for House District 93, and he now is a county commissioner for Precinct 3 in Tarrant County. A father of five and a fearless fighter for freedom. Matt, thanks for joining us.
Thanks for having me, Mandy.
So I am so grateful that you are here to come and kind of share your experiences as a legislator, also as a county commissioner, and your fight for freedom for lower property taxes and more prosperity for families to raise their children. You have been on the front lines for a decade, over a decade.
Hard to believe, yeah.
Yeah, and you've really seen it all. And one of the things that we've been talking a lot about is taxpayer-funded lobbyists.
Yeah.
And how what's going on inside the Capitol for those six months every two years, the scurrying around and people that are really influencing the legislation is not always based on what the voters and the constituents, the Texans, want back in their districts. So I wanted to talk, jump in first to SB2, and you have a lot of experience with that. And I wanted you to share with our viewers what that was and kind of what happened as I'm looking at the very interesting list of those that lobbied against it.
Yeah, well, again, thanks for having me on. But in 2019, Dennis Bonham was the speaker, and he made a cornerstone of his platform, Property Tax Relief. And at that time, now Speaker Burrows was the chairman of Ways and Means. And so he put forth a property tax bill that would radically transform how we not only paid property taxes, but how we received information on that. So one of the key provisions was it rolled back the automatic rate. You couldn't raise taxes more than 8% without going to the voters and saying, "We want more." SB2 actually pulled that back down to 3.5%. So a huge decrease where that rollback rate was going to come in. And then there was transparency pieces. You had to put out on the cards, okay, your local governments are the ones raising your taxes with these tax rates. It's not the state, it's the local government. This is a tax increase. All these kinds of things that actually helped the taxpayer understand not only were their property taxes increasing, but who was responsible for that. So it was a great transparency bill. It was a great public policy bill. I was thrilled to support it. I thought Speaker Burrows had a great piece of legislation, and I think it's done really well for Texans.
Yeah. Well, but those that come out against that type of transparency, we're often seeing it's these associations, Texas Municipal League, Texas Association of Counties, you've got Texas Association of School Boards. I think I saw in here Pastors for Texas Children, which is also an extension of kind of those entities. You've got Texas AFL-CIO. It's a lot of these associations that are paid for by taxpayers, but they somehow decide to come in and lobby against what taxpayers are begging for, that it's property tax relief and reform. And so you talked about SB2 in 2019. I know Governor Abbott is making this a cornerstone of his election. He came out with a lot of incredible proposals to truly give that. But can you explain to us, as a member of TAC, the Texas Association of Counties, what goes on behind the scenes? I know you just went to a conference. What happens with these associations that taxpayers, you and I are paying for, and then they get behind closed doors? What really happens?
Yeah, what always frustrated me was that taxpayer-funded lobbying aspect of it. You know, lobbyists aren't, it's not inherently bad. It's not bad to lobby on a bill or to give information. They actually play a very important role in the legislative process. And when done well, which a lot of them do, it's actually very helpful. The thing I always was frustrated with on taxpayer-funded lobbying is that usually they would come to Austin and advocate for policies that were directly contrary to the people who were paying for them to come and lobby. Because if you asked anybody back in the cities, in the counties, "Do you want lower taxes?" 100% of them would say, "Absolutely. My taxes are too high." Yet you have these associations that are coming to the legislature testifying on SB2 and other type bills that are saying, "No, no, no, we don't want to do that. Don't take the rollback rate down from 8% to 3.5%. Don't do these transparency things." And that always struck me as very odd because I was thinking, "Aren't they really representing the taxpayer?" But they weren't. They were representing the taxing entity.
That's right.
And that was the whole difference. And so until we can get the onus off having these taxing entities have the bigger say instead of the taxpayer, I think we're going to continue to see the same kind of policy failures that we've seen in the past because we're not able to get some of these things across the finish line.
That's a fantastic point, is that when these taxpayer-funded lobbyists are coming up to the Capitol, they aren't representing the people. So I talk about this all the time with the Texas Association of School Boards, and I've talked to hundreds of trustees across the state of Texas, maybe thousands at this point, who say, "We don't have direct contact with the Texas Association of School Boards. It is just our superintendent." And they're going up there, and it's not about what the trustees or the parents in particular who are making a decision whether or not to send their child to that school. It's not them. It's about how do we advocate for less transparency, less freedom for parents, and more money, more money. And at some point, you kind of get to the point where Margaret Thatcher was right. You eventually run out of other people's money. And I think we're seeing this all across Texas where people are begging and pleading, "I can't stay in my house."
That's right. Well, and I think you made a really good point right there, is that now that I'm on the county side, people say, "Oh, have you changed your thoughts on taxpayer-funded lobbying?" I said, "Absolutely not." Because when I was in the legislature, I wanted to hear from my superintendents, my city council members, my mayors, my school board members, and from people back home. So if you get rid of the taxpayer-funded lobbyists, you actually force those local elected officials to have more ownership and be more engaged in the process, which is only going to help. If somebody comes to me as a legislator and they're from the school board, city council, I know at least that person's been put into office by several voters.
Right.
Who have, on a platform where they actually have accountability. Taxpayer-funded lobbyists don't have that. And so I think the more we get away from taxpayer-funded lobbyists, the more actually interaction we'll have from the local elected officials, who I want to hear from more anyway as a legislator, and I think most legislators are like that.
I agree. And I, you know, I've talked to a lot of legislators that are with you, and they're in office right now, and they're saying, "I give out my cellphone number. I'm routinely talking to my local elected officials." That's, that's why we have a representative form of government, right?
That's right.
Is we're all elected and supposed to be talking. And a lot of times, not a lot of times, all the time, that taxpayer-funded lobbyist is not usually a direct representative of the people. Very few of them, if any. I don't even know of many that show up that are taxpayer-funded lobbyists that live in their districts. You know, I-
That's a great point.
It's something that how can you truly have the buy-in and want to serve the people if you're not there? And that's where our founders were so smart in creating a representative form of government.
That's right. And it would be one thing if the lobbyists weren't from the area, but they were advocating on behalf of what the majority of those people would want.
Right.
It's a whole different thing when they're not from that area and they're advocating against the majority of what people want. That's where I think it gets really concerning.
Right. So let's talk a little bit about your experience. I know that all of these associations have their conferences. I follow the TASB conference and the TASA conference and the MoKSC assessment conference, and it's just nonstop, pretty much monthly in the school sector. And of course, taxpayers are paying for these trustees to go to the Kalahari Water Park Resort or to the JW Marriott. And that really has to stop using, abusing taxpayer funds like that. But you went to the TAC conference. Tell us a little bit about what goes on at the Texas Association for Counties conference and what you've seen with the leadership as they talk to the elected representatives for the people, the Texans, that sent you there.
Yeah, one of the reasons I wanted to go to TAC, this was my first year on the county commission, and so I kind of wanted to see what that was for. Because when I came into the legislature in 2013, if TAC or TML or somebody came and said, "We're against this bill," or, you know, "You ought to advocate for this bill or support this bill," people listened, you know? And I was like, "Okay, I need to listen to this." The longer I got into my legislative tenure, the less impact TAC, TML, and some of these other entities, less of an impact they had on the legislative process. So I kind of wanted to go to the conference and see if maybe I could pick up why that was. And unfortunately, I think I know why it was. I was shocked at the amount of condescension, derision, almost vitriol that they showed towards the legislature. And again, a lot of those legislators are my friends who I'd served with and colleagues with, and I was very surprised at just the tenor and the attitude toward the legislature, which made me understand, that's the reason they don't have a voice anymore, because they're so obstinate, they're so vitriolic towards the elected officials, that they've just kind of tuned them out at this point. So I'd love to see where TAC got back into a place where it truly advocated for taxpayer policies, good governance policies, instead of just kind of being an obstruction to what's going down in the state Capitol.
Fiscal responsibility.
Fiscal responsibility is another great one.
Well, can you give us a specific example? Can you give us, I know last summer, not this past one, but in 2024, I had a trustee that came in and shared with me what I had had multiple trustees call and say, "You're not going to believe what we just heard. The CFO of the largest financial advisory firm in Texas just stood up in front of not one, but two panels and told trustees not to give teacher pay raises because they needed to be weaponized for the, yes, for the legislative session and for voting." And was very just public about it. And people, they didn't know what to do. And anyway, so I had a guest come on and tell that story out loud. He told, he said, because I asked him, I said, "Do you know anything about this?" He said, "I was in the room, and yes, it absolutely happened." And he said, almost verbatim what you said, just about the TASB view of trustees is that they're, they don't know anything, they don't know how to do things, they're not, they need to just listen to what this entity says. So can you give us an example of what occurred at the TAC conference? Anything that was said that made you feel, I mean, it's not like you're green. You've been in this world for a very long time advocating for Texans. So what is an example that they, they kind of did?
You know, one thing that they did discuss, it was right during one of the special sessions, when they were going over, I think it was Senator Bettencourt's bill on lowering that rollback rate even further from 3.5%, I think to maybe 1% or 1.5%, but it didn't include law enforcement, first responders, things like that. And I was amazed at almost every single one of the little breakouts or plenarys or whatever, how they were talking about how bad that was and how you, "We couldn't do this." And it would deplete the resources from all these counties. And I'm sitting there as Tarrant County, and we just lowered our tax rate below the no new revenue tax rate for the third year in a row. And so the 1.5%, we don't even get up to 1.5%. And I thought, there's not one person at this TAC conference that I've heard saying, "Hey, maybe we should try to make sure we're not even going up a 1.5% revenue. Maybe we should try to lower that tax rate." I never heard anybody say that. And that was kind of shocking to me. And like I said, that was a big topic of conversation because it was going on right then. I thought there might be at least one person who said, "Hey, this may not be that bad. We can probably still live within this. We can still fund law enforcement. We can do all this." But that's not the message the attendees at TAC got at all. It was just, "This is terrible. This is terrible. This is terrible." And I get some of the reasons why they said they weren't for that.
Right.
But for a monolithic idea that everybody across the board would say, "This is a bad idea," struck me as very concerning again, because there should be at least some kind of even dissension amongst the county that, "We don't have to raise revenue every year on the taxpayers. Why don't we actually even try to decrease it?" And we know that can happen because we just did it in our county.
Right. Any sessions, any of the plenary sessions on how to cut spending and find maybe some waste or abuse that is completely unnecessary?
That's a great question. And we ought to, we ought to pitch that for next year's conference. That's a great idea, actually.
Yeah, it is.
Because I know that there's county commissioners and county employees that want to do that.
Right.
I've talked to enough of them, some great county officials all around this state.
Right.
And they want to do those kinds of things. But you're right, they're never usually given the tools to do that part.
Right. It's something, it's fascinating. The more that we kind of just, I listen to, it's the parent empowerment movement, and that includes every parent across the state of Texas. And we were able to galvanize parents to join us in the mission for transparency, equality, respect, and choice regardless of where you were sending your child to school. But something that I constantly heard was the constant lies, I would say, that somehow choice was going to defund public schools.
Right.
And I just watched Governor Abbott's great launch of his property tax, not just relief plan, but his property tax reform plan. And we're already seeing the teeth-nashing and the lies coming out of associations and the media, quite frankly, saying that now this is going to defund schools. And it kind of tells me, I'm like, "Look, we can find, I've found billions of dollars of waste within our public school sector." Because we spend 100, we spent $100 billion last year. $100 billion, $18,125 per student. And unfortunately, a huge portion of that goes to the capital outlay. And then they say, "Well, we need to build schools." And simultaneously, they're saying, "And we're cutting, and we're, and we're closing schools." So it's this constant game of whack-a-mole of going feelings over facts.
Yeah.
And we can cut some things. We don't have to continue to grow government, grow full-time employees, grow wasteful spending, because it's there.
Well, and I would say, even some of the misleading headlines I've seen in the couple days since Governor Abbott's put out his plan.
Yeah.
I think one said he's going to starve public schools.
That was it. That's right.
And I was like, "Starve public schools?" There's nothing in his plan that even really touches school funding.
Right.
All it's doing is shifting it from a local ISD tax to the state is going to take on more of that burden.
Right.
And so it's just shifting who pays for it, not that public schools in any way going to be defunded or funded even less than it is right now. And so, but I think you're right. It's that knee-jerk reaction by a lot of these associations that anytime you try to do something pro-taxpayer in the Capitol, whether it's Governor Abbott, Speaker Burrows, Lieutenant Governor Patrick, there's this knee-jerk reaction to, "Oh, we can't allow that to happen."
Right.
But if you go to the people and say, "Do you want the rollback rate to go to 1.5%? Yes, absolutely. Do you want 2/3 to have to approve any kind of tax increase? Absolutely. Should we stop paying ISD taxes 60% to 70% of your property tax? Should we get some relief on that? Absolutely." So you go down all five planks of what he said, I guarantee you, it's like the school choice thing. When you ask the parents, are they in favor of some kind of school choice program, overwhelming majority said, "Yes, you're going to have the same thing here," which is why, again, it's disconcerting that we have associations that are already panning the idea, considering that the people in Texas really want this.
Are asking for this. I couldn't have said it better myself because that, that's it. It's just, it's completely false. No one wants to harm public schools. We want to raise them up, support them. And, but be good stewards of taxpayer money.
That's right.
Because we keep looking across the board. And one of the things that I really loved about his plan was for taxpayers, usually, well, historically, taxpayers have only been able to go and vote on whether or not they want to increase their property taxes, right?
That's right.
But I love that he's saying, "Hey, how about you could show up to decrease it?" And I think that is just absolutely the sign of an incredible leader that realizes families are making cuts. They're, you know, foregoing, I've talked to families that forego repairs on their homes, or don't take a summer vacation, or make decisions, have to cut back on their tidings, whatever it is. And then we're looking at parents and we're looking at taxpayers and saying, "Look, you're just going to have to make some changes, make some cutbacks, turn off more lights." While the government's like, "Let's go."
That's right.
The local government, I should say. They're like, "Let's go spend more, and we can do this." And that is really something that I'm grateful to see, that, as you mentioned, great leaders, Governor Abbott, Speaker Burrows, Lieutenant Governor Patrick, really see, I'm sure they hear tenfold what I hear talking to parents, and understand that Texans are begging for relief, and we can make some responsible cuts.
That's right.
Without harming our great first responders, without harming our schools.
That's right. Well, and what a great message from the local, the community, to say, "Hey, you're taking way too much of our money." If they're the ones saying, "Decrease our taxes," then maybe they're willing to live without certain programs or certain things. But I'll go back to Tarrant County. Again, we lowered our no new revenue, our tax rate below the no new revenue rate three years, and we're actually spending about $80 million less, real dollars, in our budget now than we were three years ago. Nobody's been laid off because of the cuts or the tax rates. No services have been cut that haven't been replaced in another way, in another partnership. And so we're the third-largest county in the state. And I feel like if we can do that, other counties can absolutely do it as well. And it just goes to show those taxpayers are asking, begging for relief. Governor Abbott's plan, I think, will actually do that. So as a local government, we should be supporting that and be excited about that, because we know it's going to be good for our citizens, our constituents.
Yes, absolutely. I think that if we can make sure, we've got to end taxpayer-funded lobbying, because at the Capitol, when the legislation is crafted, that's the thing. We are a big, beautiful state, and it is, it can be hard for families that are working, that are getting kids to and from school, or activities, or managing homework, to get up here. And so we have to make sure that it truly is the people's voices, who sent elected leaders like yourself when you were there, and other great leaders at the legislative, that they're not listening to voices that have a clear financial incentive to drive up the cost of everything.
Yeah. And sometimes there's conflicts of interest between the taxpayer-funded lobbyist and maybe some of their other clients as well. Sometimes there's maybe people on both sides. Now, again, again, people think lobbyist is a four-letter word. It's not. Lobbyists are good and healthy to the system. But when there's a conflict of interest, or when you're playing both sides of it, that's where it gets like, "Okay, are you really advocating for us?" Or is it just to protect which, another client or something you have going on over here?
I think that's a great point, is that people need to understand that when we talk about these lobbyists, it's not like they just have one client. You can go to Transparency USA and you can look up the lobbyists, and there are thousands of them.
There are lots.
The, and I'll say, usually the top ones, if you look at that first, first list, it's former legislators. And so God bless you for not going in there and siphoning money off the public. But it's former legislators, their chiefs of staff, their legislative directors, because they know the game, they know how to get in there, and they know how to affect the process really from the beginning, from it getting assigned to a committee, to it getting assigned and put on the calendar, then to the floor. And then, of course, after the floor, you're going to have to, you've got to move it through another chamber, whether it's the House or the Senate. Then when you get it, then is there a concurrence where you can go in? And you really do have these experts at the process that are now receiving, some of them are making more than $10 million a year. And you can see that. It's all public. And it really does cause you to have to do a gut check on, I mean, greed is definitely a part of what we can see, because when we're looking at these testimony lists, when we can see who is making the rounds, it's, there definitely seems to be some conflicts of interest, and one that I talk a lot about, because I think it is the most appalling. It's just, it's, there's a lot of appalling examples, in my opinion, but the most appalling example, it is a former elected official, and that's Thomas Ratliff of, I don't, Ratliff Consulting or Ratliff Lobbying. But Thomas is a former State Board of Education member and the son of a former lieutenant governor, so very powerful political family. And Thomas has, we can track and see, he's somewhere around half a million dollars from taxpayers. So you and me and the rest of our viewers in the world, we've paid him almost, or maybe over half a million dollars, it's kind of ranges that we get. And so he gets that from the Texas Association of School Boards. And then he also actively works to support the drag queens testifying against banning drag queen shows for children. His son is apparently a famous drag queen that was on RuPaul's Drag Queen Show, and the name is Plasma. And he gave an interview, and this was him bragging. He was very proud. He said in the interview that, "My family in Texas, I come from a political dynasty, and my father right now is teaching drag queens how to testify in the Senate against this legislation that would protect children from watching grown men dressed up in provocative clothes gyrating in front of them." I mean, that's what these are. So it is just appalling to me that any taxpayer would be forced to fund someone that also is engaging in that kind of activity.
Well, and you're relying on him for guidance on to what's lawful and legal in Texas from a TASB perspective.
Correct.
But then he's trying to circumvent or subvert the law in another place. I do think that's concerning. So, and going back to lobbyists, yes, there's lots of them. There's some really good ones. And the reason there's so many chiefs of staff and staffers and former members is because they do understand the process, and that can be greatly beneficial to you as you're going through the process. That's all well and good. Good for them. They've done it. They're smart, and they figured that out. What gets you concerned is the lack of transparency when they could, there could be a conflict of interest there. And that's where I really think, again, taxpayer-funded lobbying, get rid of that. Everybody's kind of on an even playing field at that point.
Right.
Because when somebody comes into my office and they're lobbying for a certain client or a certain issue, you know where they're at. When those conflicts of interest come in, you don't know which side it's going on.
Right.
And so I think that's what makes it the most frustrating, and that's why singularly the taxpayer-funded lobbyists, I think something needs to be done about that.
Absolutely. And then we're certainly going to be going after ending that practice, because no taxpayer should be forced to support someone that is simultaneously advocating to have drag queens in front of children. And of course, that's just one, that's an example. But people need to understand that there are inherent conflicts of interest when you're advocating. I talk about this all the time, the architecture, engineering, construction firms, many of whom are private equity-owned, so they're, they're not even owned by Texans. And here, when we talk about property taxes, what they've realized is property taxes are paid by taxpayers that are the golden goose that keeps on giving. And our great leaders at the legislative level, so when you were there, yourself included, y'all don't levy the property taxes. It's the local levels.
That's right.
And so what is happening is they hire lobbyists, and they're on the private sector. But of course, these lobbyists are also taxpayer-funded lobbyists for many of these associations and whatnot. And they are preventing property tax reforms occurring at the legislative level, where we could make sure that the system at the local level is not being abused. So for example, you can look at the largest architecture firms in Texas, whether it's Huckabee and Associates, whether it's VLK, whether it's PBK. I mean, the list, there's about 10 of them, that they're almost exclusively the only entities that build our public school facilities, which have turned into, they're gorgeous, but they have turned into massive drains on the taxpayers. But what people don't realize is, they're there at the beginning. People that work for their own team, so for example, VLK Architects, Scott Mildar also owns Friends Consulting Group, which is a bond planning entity. And they openly brag about the fact that they've passed over 100 bonds in the past 20 years with a 94% success rate. Him and his wife also own Friends of Texas Public Schools, which are traveling around to talk to our public schools. There is that conflict of interests that are happening. And then, of course, they have lobbyists that are up here that also lobby. And so you're preventing taxpayers from truly being able to say, "Stop it." These same entities, VLK, Huckabee, PBK, they're all the ones that fund the bonds. Prosper for the kids, Forney for the kids, Belton for the kids, Dr. for the kids, it's always for the kids. But the truth is, we're enslaving our children with a debt that they'll never pay off.
Well, and that's, that's an interesting point. It'd be one thing if they said, "Hey, we don't want SB2 or something like that to pass, because then we know that's going to hurt the bond revenue that we get for the school district, which we know is going to hurt our ability to build more and more schools, which is our job at the end of the day." If they were that transparent, I think people would be like, "Okay, I get it," right? So be transparent.
Right.
Don't have those conflicts of interest, or at least say what those are. I think people would understand that. It's when, like you said, they don't know what's going on, and there's all these like connections and webs that really frustrate people.
Right. It's the connections and webs, but it's also because what we're seeing, that those same entities are receiving massive contracts. So the same entities, and I had put out just a lit, I mean, I have hundreds of examples where architecture, engineering, construction firms are donating as little as $100 and receiving, for every $100, over $150,000 in return on that $100. Or for every $1, $15,000 in return within two years. That was just tracking bonds that had passed in the past few years to see what contracts had been issued. That is, I mean, that's a good gig if you can get it. For every $1 you give, you get $15,000 in return.
It's a great ROI.
And I think that's where we're seeing all these palatial palace-like facilities that are being built. I'm not sure if you were, Crowley ISD built a $150 million football stadium. Or, no, let me take that back. It wasn't even football for Friday Night Lights. It was a $150 million track and field stadium.
Wow. That is impressive.
I mean, when I was growing up, the track ran around the football field. That's all I'm saying. What are we doing? We're enslaving, we're enslaving our taxpayers, and quite frankly, our children. Because every child in Texas Public Schools has a $40,000 debt attached to them.
Man, that's incredible.
Half a trillion dollars in local debt, Matt.
That's why we need Governor Abbott's Five Point Plan.
That's why we need Governor Abbott's Five Point, I'm with you. And that's, I want Texans to know what you know and what you witnessed there, is you send great leaders like yourself up there. Your representatives need to hear from you and need to understand, not these lobbyists that are planted there for six months out of the year to come in and persuade you just a little more government, just a little more spending, that it'll all be fixed. Because we know that the money is not ever, particularly in the education system, going to solve the massive problems that we see with low and poor performance, a lack of civics knowledge and all of that. So I want our Texans to understand, this goes together. You will never get the great property tax reforms that Governor Abbott is calling for if we continue to have taxpayer-funded lobbyists that are up there constantly using, I've heard of some pretty coercive tactics from other legislators, to change bills and manipulate what's going on in legislation.
Yeah. Again, I just think it's good on so many levels. It's not only going to help more- It's not only going to help more policy, but it's going to help the policymakers have more interaction with other elected officials they need to be hearing from anyway. So it's a win-win.
That's right. I, I hope that all of the representatives have given their cellphone and, and anyone that I've talked to, they say, my county commissioners, our leaders, they do have my cellphone. So come to me instead of going through a lobbyist, because it means so much more when you hear from people than it affects their lives.
That's right. And Tarrant County delegation's great on that. I've got all their cell phones. I talk with them continually. And I think that's so much more of a better system than, than just having one taxpayer-funded lobbyist kind of speaking as one voice for everybody.
Well, it sounds like it. You said you cut eighty million dollars.
Yeah. Now, a lot of that goes to Judge Tim O'Hara and Commissioner Manny Ramirez, who got there two years before I did. And they've been leading the charge on a lot of that. But I was grateful to join them this year to cut more and to cut our tax rate again.
Well, God bless them for doing that. Because I know Governor Abbott says often, we move at the speed of business here in Texas. And obviously we do. We're the, I don't know if we're the seventh largest economy at this point in the world, which is amazing. But we also, obviously, he's committed, you're committed, our, our great leadership with Speaker Burrows and Lieutenant Governor Patrick. I know they're committed at saying, we have to make this a great place for family. We started with parent empowerment and giving, finally delivering education freedom to parents, but we also need to make sure that every Texan knows that your tax dollars are not being wasted to the tune of, I think last year it was, well, the previous session, the 88th legislative session, was a hundred million dollars in just payments to taxpayer-funded lobbyists. And that doesn't even touch the legislation, the property tax issues that they finagled and prevented from truly going through. So this is an issue that if we want to continue to be a leader of the free world, that we absolutely have to tackle.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, I appreciate you sharing all these stories. Before we wrap up, I would love for you to look in that camera right there. I'd love for you to talk to your former colleagues, your current colleagues, and the Texans who you have talked to for over a decade that you've been serving, Texans. Talk to them about why ending taxpayer-funded lobbying is so important so that we can truly reform our property tax system and pass the great legislation that will keep Texas, Texas.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, this is an idea that we've had for many years now. Banning taxpayer-funded lobbying is not a new idea. Legislators have been trying it for over a decade now, but sometimes it takes a while for an issue to finally break through. And I think now is the time to ban taxpayer-funded lobbying. We've talked about many of those reasons today, but at the end of the day, you do not want to have an entity in Austin advocating for a policy that you do not want. And that's what is going on so many times, is that if you were in Austin talking to your legislator, you would say one thing, the taxpayer-funded lobbyists are often saying